The tobacco free policy.
Good evening. My name is Mia Petrini and I have worked as a community health coordinator with Healthy Acadia for the past two years. Can you all hear me okay? Healthy Acadia is a community health coalition serving Hancock and Washington Counties. My office is based in Ellsworth and I am a resident of Amherst, Maine. Healthy Acadia works with hundreds of community partners to address a wide range of local health needs. Our work encompasses health promotion programming and health education classes. We focus on everything from food security to healthy aging to substance use prevention and recovery. So I'm here today to speak to you all about tobacco prevention. Part of our work includes supporting tobacco-free policies in a variety of settings, so municipalities, schools, hospitals, social service agencies, and work sites. We have a history of partnering with local towns on tobacco-free policy. In the past few years, we've worked with a number of towns in Hancock County to strengthen tobacco-free recreation policies for town-owned parks, playgrounds, and swimming areas, including Bar Harbor, Tremont, Lemoine, and Ellsworth. And we also just recently partnered with the town of Mount Desert. So if you all ultimately agree that a tobacco-free policy is something you can support, we're prepared to work with you on language to update your policy in a way that reflects your wisdom and expertise, is responsive to the needs of town residents and visitors, and accommodates local area concerns. Collaborating with municipalities to adopt tobacco use policies protects community health. And by working together to create healthier environments, we help residents and visitors thrive. We reduce exposure to secondhand smoke, and we reduce the burden of tobacco-related disease. It's important to include e-cigarettes and marijuana smoke. With the recent rise in electronic cigarettes, including a sharp increase in the use of vaping devices among youth, it's becoming more important that tobacco-free policies include e-cigarettes. Some locations are also expanding their policies to be smoke and tobacco-free, which allows them to include vaping products and marijuana smoke, which of course is a growing area of concern with the recent legalization of non-medical marijuana in Maine. So why is it important to be engaged in a conversation about smoking? You may wonder why it's important to address smoking when it seems that more attention is paid these days to the COVID-19 pandemic, the opioid epidemic, diabetes, cancer, and heart disease because national headlines tend to highlight those public health problems. Tobacco use is still one of the leading causes of preventable death and disease in Maine and in America each year from cigarette smoking in America. And tobacco takes a heavy toll on Mainers across the state. 2,400 adults die every year from smoking. 17.6% of adults smoke. 30% of high school students use e-cigarettes. And 29% of cancer deaths are attributable to smoking. So in our state, annual healthcare costs due to smoking amount to $811 million, and the tobacco industry spends an estimated $40.8 million each year on marketing in Maine. So why should we address smoking at the municipal level? No safe level of exposure to secondhand smoke exists. Secondhand smoke is detrimental to human health, and it increases a nonsmoker's risk of developing asthma, lung cancer, and heart disease. Cigarette butts constitute the most littered item in our country, so tobacco-free policies can reduce maintenance costs. Tobacco-free area policies will positively affect social norms regarding tobacco use and promote tobacco-free living. And smoking in recreational areas creates a really confusing message for our youth. They participate in healthy recreation while being exposed to tobacco. So we stand ready to partner with you all to update your policy in a mutually agreeable way should you decide to move forward with this project with us. We have template language available, so you don't have to start from scratch. We also have mini grant funding available for the development of a comprehensive tobacco-free policy. And thank you all so very much for your time and your attention and for all you do on behalf of residents and visitors to the town of Bucksport.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Any questions?
No. Thank you.
Next item is consider minutes of previous meetings. Town council minutes from 10:14, 2021. How the council like proceed?
Motion approved.
Second. Motion second. All those in favor? opposed? Correspondents, we have an oral police call on 10:10, 2021, and Down East Transportation Ridership reports for August and September of 2021. Any questions? Item six is ordinances to consider introduce. We have a first reading for the Bucksport Communications and Social Media Policy. We have a chance to look at that. We'll come back on our next meeting with a second reading and a public hearing on that. Rich? Discussion items. Community sales data. Richard Rattella, Economic Development Director.
Did you see my email that showed the data? I'm not sure how well the... How well it showed up in the email. I'm not sure how well it's going to show up on the screen. Hope everybody at home and in the audience can see this. We talk a lot about, especially this time of year, we talk a lot about economic development and what's going on. So I decided to do some research, and I know some of the local papers in the Belfast-Rockland area, their local newspapers produce this data for the residents monthly. So we don't have that with any of the local papers, local, Ellsworth, Bangor Daily News. So I did some research and digging on my own and contacted Maine Revenue Service, and they gave me the link to the website. I believe I may have given you one that I updated and gave you a 10-year synopsis. I looked at 2011 to 2020. What I really want the council to see was when the mill closed in 2014, the total annual taxable sales at that point was $31 million, and that includes restaurant lodging, auto transportation, general merchandise, building supplies, food stores, and other retail. And since then, if you come all the way up to the COVID year of 2020, we've increased that number to over $36 million. So the businesses in town that had been here with us through the pandemic, those that have joined us prior to the pandemic, after the mill closed, bringing in some revenue. And you can see, you know, restaurants and lodging were hampered a little bit last year due to COVID. They lost about $700,000 in sales. But auto transportation stayed right on par. Building supply, that was up over $2.2 million right there. So I'm not sure why food store, general merchandise, and other retail, I wasn't able to get an answer on that, why those haven't been updated. But if you take a whole list of those and see where it comes, you add those three totals up and subtract it from the other four columns, they're roughly right about the same, right in that about $7 million range. Food stores would be your Hanafords, Tozers, and Leadbets. General merchandise would be your smaller shops in the downtown district. Other retail, they had a definition for other retail, but I guess that would be other. Did you have any questions? Did you see anything on there that looked maybe alarming or anything?
Is there anything, Rich, is there anything built in for inflation or anything like that? Is that adjustment already in this number?
It's already in this number.
Okay.
Yes, yeah. So I'm trying to...
So, I guess, so I think the next question, or the next, maybe the next statement is, what do we do with this?
Well, this should be something that we should be seeing yearly. There's a monthly taxable sales, but it's by ESA, which is your service area, our service area is Ellsworth, and that is computed monthly. So you can see how everybody that falls in the Ellsworth ESA is doing on a monthly basis. I have access to that report, and it's actually interesting to see during COVID how the numbers actually went up month over month versus what we were being told. I mean, these are sales reported by the businesses to Maine Revenue Service. There's no fudging numbers. There's no science is what did you make? It goes, what did you collect? And there it is.
What I'm wondering is, is there a possibility here to market this in a point where, you know, hey, folks, come to Bucksport, and you can, you know, the sales aren't going anywhere. We're trying to keep this stuff here. And is that, you know, is that something we can look at with our marketing plan to use these to our advantage?
Yes, absolutely. And I've actually shared this with both the Ellsworth American and the Bucksport Enterprise. Neither one of who published this data yet, but I think it is important. I think that everyone should know what their talent taxable sales are. There's another report that I didn't include for you, but I shared at the Economic Development Committee. It's the Heritage Park taxable values. So we talked that there's only two available lots left in the industrial park, but there's the possibility of potentially expanding if it were to warrant it. Now, the report that I sent to the committee was kind of broken up into like four different sheets, but this is the whole view right there of the park. You've got real estate and the real estate taxes paid. You've got the personal property taxes with the bed returns and the total taxable value that each of these properties bring in. Now, it's important to understand this is Heritage Park Road. The Heritage Park that the portions that the town owns actually begin at the Waterworld Two and Berry Septic and goes out. Anything prior to that was formerly Wardwell's land. It was not part of the towns. So that's your A.J. Motorcycle Northeast Cable and Osborne Plumbing and Heating and such. So when you scroll down through here, you'll see some of the values, and you'll see some of the businesses on here. Like I said, again, I can't include all of Heritage Park Road because they're all on the signs, so, and they're all important businesses to us. When you look at the real estate taxes, that number computes too. I'm not sure why it didn't show up here when Caitlin put this out there, but it's roughly 70, right about 74,000 we collect in real estate taxes, I believe was that number. 73,218.93, and that showed up down here. And then your personal property showed up there, which was the remaining portion of that, 124. Greenhead Lobster is your biggest payer of taxes at $57,000. And the next closest is 13,000 in industrial mainhole storage. So the total tax being generated from Heritage Park is 124,037 on an annual basis. That doesn't include water sewer. Again, these are more numbers that the council should be interested in, the Economic Development Committee definitely needs to be interested in, and the public should know about because when we talk about only two lots left in what we have for industrial, does it make sense to go further? Or do you maybe buy it and maybe do housing? Because we have added a little, the council approved off of Heritage Park Road, driveways to residential, so.
Rich, can you send this out too?
I can absolutely send this out to the council. Does anyone have any questions on those? If you haven't heard, central mainhole storage is up for sale. I know when I spoke to the agent at 1 o'clock in the afternoon, he listed it at 9 o'clock in the morning and had five interested parties already.
Any questions? Information and data is always good, Rich, so, you know, now what do we do with that? When we get it, so.
We'll use it to our advantage, and that's where we lay the presentation.
Thanks. Next is an update from the ARPA survey.
Yes, I provided you with a sheet this evening that through November 2nd, we had received a total of 286 responses to our survey. We sent out 2,480, which were all the postal addresses in Bucksport. 231 of them ranked their choices by, from a 1 to 10. 55 didn't choose to do that, but either only wrote something, or they made a lot of checkmarks that didn't make it easy to determine what their priorities were, just that there were... I'm still evaluating those to see how to present that information to the council, maybe just to list all the ones that had checkmarks, but there's no ranking on those by priority. And then at the end, these are some of the other suggestions that were written in on these surveys. But at this point, in looking at responses, I took each item and sorted it, 1 to 10, and if they were in the top three, that 1, 2, 3, the numbers for the, everyone who selected these as their top three is for each item. And the grant program procedures is the highest. It's at 66% of our responses that were identifiable, identified grant programs as a priority. 124 identified stipends for first responders, and 124 also identified the senior meal plan support as the top. And then 92 was broadband, waterfront walkway was 68, increasing public transportation, 49, upgrading rent facilities, 42, assisting the historical society, 20, renovation of the floats, 13, and upgrading the broadcast equipment, 11. We are still receiving surveys. I'll continue to update this while we, the council thinks about, but I wanted you to have an idea several weeks into this of what we were seeing for response and where people were primarily identifying what they saw priorities should be.
Next, questions? On the other suggestion items, were any of those multiples or most of those one-offs?
None of the things that were listed here had more than five.
So they wouldn't have, okay, been top 10 anyway?
No. And a number of them aren't eligible for funding anyway.
All right. Next item is council meeting date. The first meeting, and we sort of set ourselves up for a two meeting per this month in November by moving last week's to this week. If the council is okay, we can reschedule the 11th to the 18th. So if they're okay with that?
Yes.
That will give us two in November, and then we'll get back on track.
It'll be one in December, but this way you had one October, two November, one December instead of two October, and then one, one until you get to January, so.
If something does pop up, we can always look at trying, getting one together in December.
We can do something similar in December if we had to.
So everybody's okay with the 18?
Yes.
Next is agenda items. The first is resolve 2022-19 to approve the sewer commitment for July 1st, 2021 to September 30th, 2021, in the amount of $236,825.96. How the council like proceed?
Motion approved.
We have a motion second. Any comments? All those in favor? Opposed? Motion passes? Next is resolve 2022-20 to approve the contract amendment for staffing with main water. How the council like proceed?
Motion approved.
Second. Motion second. Any comments on that? Pretty well explained in the last meeting on what we were doing.
And there's a copy of the contract in your packet as well that they provided.
All those in favor? Opposed? Motion passes? Next is resolve 2022-21 to approve the contract for replacement pool filters if the team member missed the pool. How the council like proceed?
Motion approved.
Comments?
Mr. Solinsky is here this evening to answer questions that anyone has about the pool filters that have, there have been some raised. Mr. Robinson is also here. He had raised questions about the filters, and former Mayor Keen also had asked questions in regard to this. So Mr. Solinsky's here to explain the recommendation for the filters if anyone has questions.
And I'm going to raise a question that David had asked me, talking about the filters themselves. Is there a process that we could check the container? Thing that says that, is that actually, because that's what we're talking about, replacing, correct? Is the whole?
Correct. Replace the whole filter.
Right. And his question was, is that, does that need to be replaced because it's failing? Or does it need to be replaced because, why?
I mean, I've been working with the town for multiple years and...
If you could come up here just so they could see her on TV. Thank you.
Been working with the town for a couple of years, or multiple years, and about 15 years ago, we replaced the media, the sand that's in the filter, and everything looked good, the internals, the integrity of the inside of the shell. And then with the renovations a couple of years ago, we decided to change the media. I think that was part of the package. We looked at everything, and it still looked okay. So that was my professional opinion that that was fine. The filter performed very well the first year, although a normal backwash is every two to three weeks, and we were doing it every week. I attributed that to the new media. Sometimes it takes a little bit to settle in, and we are on, it was a short season that year too because of COVID. This year, full season, we was getting on an average three days, and then we'd have to do a backwash. That is not normal. It is, as to why, I don't know. Without tearing the filter apart, and when I say apart, literally cut it open and find out. There could be some scaling, rusting on the inside that could be plugging up the media. One of the questions that I was asked was, well, does this filter media have to be settled in? It'd be just the opposite of what he mentioned. At two years old, it should be operating fine. And again, the only thing I can come up with is the interior of the filter is static to rust. The question why I brought it up in the beginning was, we've worked hard, myself, Mr. Wardwell, and the council to get this pool up and running so the community can use it. Great success the last couple of years too. I would hate to see the city of Bucksport be in the middle of a season and have that filter fail. You'll be calling me to do emergency repair. Can't get filters for eight to 10 weeks. So you'd be immediately shutting down, and then you'd have to deal with the public again. So that's why I mentioned replacing the filters. The filters are close to 40 years old, because I think they were replaced...
30.
30?
92 there is all.
Okay, so 30 years. That's a very good life for a steel filter tank. The new ones we propose are fiberglass, which come with a 50-year warranty. We've never had to replace a fiberglass tank. So, so that being said, the question, another question that came up was, well, in six or eight years, I guess you have a plan to replace the pool? That was asked of me the other day when the gentleman called me.
We just had you working on the, whoever did the work on the pool, that was our replacement.
Well, he just mentioned, he said, well, in six or eight years, I'm going to replace the pool.
No.
And I said, okay, well...
Oh, I say no. I don't know if this council will...
It was actually a legitimate question. He said, well, we have to replace the filters and everything. Well, in the last two years, we've replaced the motor and pump, the strainer basket, the valving in the bottom of the surge tank to make it safe. And now for replace the filter system, all of that can be incorporated in a new pool if you go that avenue. It will be large enough and new enough so you won't have to have that expenditure with a new pool.
Okay.
Any more questions? And hopefully I explained it.
I think I covered what I was supposed to ask about. I mean, I'm, this is all foreign to me, so I'm taking information from a citizen that asked me to just get an explanation on where we were going.
Like I said, I mean, I wish I could tell you 100% that why. I don't know. I just know that 44 years of experience tells me when it starts doing like it does, replace it.
Questions from the council here? Yeah, just a second.
So you said that with the fiberglass ones that you haven't seen that needed to be replaced, but is there like a lifespan of those, or is it just?
We don't know how long they'll last. And I've been doing pools for 44 years. And within the first 10 years, I started replacing them with fiberglass, and we've had no issues with them. We don't have the scaling and the rust through and any of that.
And you've seen that with the steel ones? You've seen the scaling and then the...
I've replaced a lot of them. I sent sewer list the other day, and every one of those had a steel filter that were in that 30 to 40-year range. Actually, we did one in Colby Sawyer College, almost identical system, identical filter and what we proposed to do.
Thanks. Question?
Is there any way to inspect that tank before you spend all this money to replace it? Maybe there's nothing wrong with it. Maybe just need to clean it, maybe need to scale it to be taken off, you know, could it be relined? Can you put something on the inside that'll save it for...
The cost of, we've never relined one because the cost is almost as much as replacing the new. Once it starts rusting, it could rust through. There could be areas that are this thick or this thick.
Testing you can do to that to determine whether the fitness of the tank, ultrasonic testing?
We've never done that.
Well, now, why would you? You know, $58,000 for new filter, you know?
All that, that...
Yeah, I just, I'm the person that fixes things. I don't just replace it because it's not working. I want to find out why it's not working, right? And then maybe if it's gone beyond repair, let's repair it, replace it. But if something simple, what tells you that it needs to be backwashed? What's the pressure differential?
There's a pressure differential.
You want to put a new pump in?
We put a brand-new pump in beginning of this year.
Do you have to change the pressure differential?
It stayed about the same.
Okay.
We increased the flow.
Has the pool been used a lot more this past summer?
Pardon?
Has the pool been used a lot more this past summer?
You'd know the numbers to that. Yeah, on an average, it was up a little bit, right?
It operated fewer days in 2020 than it did in 2021 because we didn't open it until the third weekend.
This backwash thing is, when did it start? You know, it's the three times, what, every three days?
About, on an average, every three days.
And then when did that start?
When does it start?
Yeah, when, can you give me a time, timeframe? When you observed that starting, was there...
Well, when we opened the pool right from the start, I came down multiple times and checked the pool. That was part of my contract, make sure it's up and running and the water's clear and balanced. And that's when it started, that three, four-day cycle.
Didn't you change the media before that or after?
Changed it the year before.
The year before.
But we only ran it about four weeks, I think, so.
Four weeks over there.
But actually, we ran it through August and then well into September that year.
It was like the 20th of September.
Okay.
We did it because it had opened late, we kept it open later.
I'll put it to you, the council and the chairman. If it was a process that was done, I would look at that and propose it, but it's not a process to reline those tanks.
Is now the process to inspect the tank?
Inspect it, yes. We'd have to open it up. We'd have to take out all the media. It's not reusable once you mix the piece on with the sand, and you'd have to put all the media, brand-new media back in. So you're, with that process, I think it was $8,000 or $9,000 to do that. Not 89, eight or nine.
Yeah, eight, okay. Okay, I'm not even familiar with this whole, what, how big a tank you talking?
It's about eight foot in diameter, about eight feet high.
So how many yards of media you putting there?
I can't remember the numbers off the top of my head. It's measured in pounds.
Special, I mean, must be some special kind of sand.
It's a special kind of sand, yes. It's not like you go to the gravel pit and take bank runs in. It's all been measured .45 to .55 millimeters. But it's not a process that I know of.
Yeah.
To reline a tank. It's just not feasible. You'd have, you'd literally have to send it to some factory somewhere. I don't even think it would, it wouldn't even come out the door.
So you're talking a two-tank system now, right?
Two tanks, yeah.
So you have a backup?
No, they both, they both operate simultaneously.
One doesn't backwash and the other one keeps going, you backwash both at the same time?
No, you backwash one at a time, but under normal operating procedure, water goes through both of them.
And all you're doing is just replacing the tank?
That's correct.
For $58,000.
And I gave the town of Bucksport a pretty good deal because like I said, we just did one almost identical at Colby Sawyer College that was closer to $90,000. Granted, it was indoors, but.
All right, yep.
Well, it's in, it's inside a.
A building.
A building, but it's, it's a different operation. They have heaters and multiple different plumbing, so that was part of the increased cost.
Okay.
So you're disconnecting the pipe from this tank?
Well, part, part of it is also the demolition and removing of the tank too is the cost of that. It's not just the tank itself that's $8,000. You're going to, then you're paying to remove it, to replace it, to fill the median. It's not just the tank itself that's at, it's the whole process.
But I've worked in the mill up here.
We've, we've had, we've had a lot of people, I understand that, and, and I'm going to go with an expert opinion and that's what I'm listening for.
And we're not going to put this up a bit?
What's that?
You're not putting this up a bit?
This is our pool contract, this is part of the contract that we, that we have with that.
Now, I did work in a mill for 10 years myself and I'm very familiar with the filters that are in most mills. It's basically the same, but they're built different.
I'm not, I'm not talking the filter, I'm just talking about the, the tank. I'm piping, I'm, I'm going, I'm going to pipe, pipe the, I, they pipe the, put pipes together, rig pipes up, hang them and so forth. Also rig up, we rig up stuff, take it out and put new stuff in. You're talking, you want $14,000 to take the old stuff out, put the new thing in.
It's just part of a payment of the whole package.
Well, I'm just, I'm a numbers guy.
Okay.
Okay? So you're talking $44,000 for this new tank?
If you can address that to us, so that's, that's not between, that's not him, that's us.
You're the one that's getting the money, isn't he?
We're, we're the one that's authorizing it, so.
I, I, maybe I'm out of line, maybe I'm out of line.
No, I, I, but we'll, but we.
I'm trying to represent the public.
We'll answer, we'll answer, I just don't, I, I don't want you to.
I know, I'm not putting the guy down, I'm just asking questions and being a consumer, a taxpayer of this town.
Right.
And to see somebody come in here and recommend $58,000 to replace something and just, okay, go ahead and replace it, no questions asked, don't set by.
Well, we've, we've actually asked.
I don't think that's at all an accurate representation of what's happened here.
We've actually asked quite a lot.
I don't think that's at all an accurate representation of what's happened here. There's no questions that have been asked?
Last meeting I came to, this is brought up, who wanted, the town manager brought this to the, to you folks, asked me any questions. The only question asked was by Mr. Morrison, want to know if this would be the final fix for this pool thing.
Okay.
Town manager said, yes, because this has, this been in there since the pool was put in. Then she corrected herself, no, it's been 50 years. So that was, I did a little research and talked to Mr. Keen and he told it had been put in 92. That's 30 years old, it gets used three months a year. I, I understand you drain it in the winter time, so the, the media still stays in though. So that's still damp and probably contributed to the rusting, correct? But, okay, I'll, I'll be quiet. Sorry, I came here.
Please, Mr. Robinson, don't leave. What former mayor Keen was suggesting was an, an ultra, a test to see how thick the walls of the tank were in case, because that would indicate whether the tank, because the idea was, or his, his thought was that if the tank, the thickness of the tank was okay, that maybe it could be somehow cleaned or somehow addressed in that way to remove the scaling and that rather than doing the whole tank. And, and so the questions that have been asked of you, is that a feasible? How would you, even if we, if we had the tank assessed for the walls?
I understand.
Would that provide you with the ability? If the, if the walls were, weren't, you know, it wasn't this thick here and this thick, you know, if it wasn't like that, but there was still an issue with how often this backwashing is happening, would you be able to do something to that tank without taking it all apart, removing everything in order to address scaling on the inside of the tank?
Like you said, I, I don't know of any process or any company that would go in and reline a steel tank. I've never seen that process done.
That, because that's what was, was thought of as a, which sounds reasonable unless you're, I, I don't know how you would even get into that.
You take, you take the hatch off and you'd have to take all the media out and then get in there and inspect it. And yeah, I'm sure there is equipment that would be able to test the thickness of the wall and then the scaling, if there is, well, there was a little bit, but not enough that I thought two years ago would be a problem. That was my professional opinion then. But after it not performing the way it's supposed to, that's why I have a concern that the whole tank could be failing. If I remember right, there's extra supports in the bottom because it started to, Tim, I think Tim put some extra supports in because it started to rust in those areas. So you could go through all of the testing, we'd have to find somebody. And I'm not how, not sure how readily available that could be done and timeframe. And then determine from there and then find somebody to reline it and.
Then it could fail the next year.
Pardon?
Then it could fail.
And then it still could fail and feasibility. So if you're spending all this money once, my error adding to it by trying to get a filter, which we would rush, try and get for, for the season, so I mean.
The other thing, excuse me, the other thing that he suggested was that there would, if that failed, that there are portable sand filters that you could hook up to the pool.
Nothing that would be big enough for that volume of water.
Okay, that was another thing that was suggested. I'm just trying to accurately represent was what was discussed.
That's fine.
I totally appreciate the questions that he's asking about the, the different, the different ways to look at it. At the same time, I feel like when this pool went down, it was pretty catastrophic. Like we, that was a major thing, that recreational point for our kids in the community. And if there is even an inkling that our filters are failing or they're not working right and, and there is a possibility of that happening and we know that putting in fiberglass filters, they're going to be something that are, that are long-lasting and permanent. Our town voted to spend a lot of money and I understand we went in and we didn't end up having to do that. So I, I think we need to put the filters in.
Yeah, it's a 50-year set, so it's.
Yep.
I hate looking at things that way.
Unfortunately, that's the way we have to look at it.
Yeah.
Well, the, even with the expense of this, we will have spent 20% of the authorized amount on, for the actual renovations to the pool if you do this, of what was authorized by voters in 2019. The other thing about this pool that is different is that there aren't very many of these asphalt pools.
There's three in the state of Maine.
That remain.
There's one, one in Brewer. We won't get into their filter systems. Callis, theirs is a lot bigger than yours by almost half. And we actually replaced their filter systems with similar, very similar sand filters. Almost the same scenario, yeah, with the asphalt pool.
Any other questions?
You're welcome.
All those in favor? Opposed, motion passes? Uh, resignations, we have two resignations from firefighter, paramedic Oliver Bianchi and Jesse Cochrane. Accept those.
I just want to note, to answer questions that have been raised by the public, that neither of these resignations were related to the, to the vaccination requirement that is now in place in the state. All of our firefighter paramedics are vaccinated and including these two who have left. For one, for he was going back to where he came from. And the second who has some family and life changes and is relocating to a larger urban area. But public safety had extremely good exit interviews with both of these staff members who gave our department high marks for that. But I, since this agenda came out, I've had a number of calls expressing concern that we had lost employees due to their vaccination requirement and that is not the case here. That, that everyone was vaccinated, we lost no one through that process.
Chief, we've opened up the applications for these, are you getting applications?
We have, we've already replaced one of the positions and we have interviews coming up for the second.
Thanks. Any questions? Next is approval of discharges. We have Barbara Blanchard, 201 Franklin Street, map 32, lot 260, sewer leens from 319, 2018, 926, 2018, 319, 2019, 926, 2019, and 326, 2020. Council like to proceed? All those in favor? Close? Eleven is town manager report.
The Department of Labor was here on Wednesday and Thursday of this week to do our SAFER inspection. SAFER is the designation, if you remember a few years ago, we received what's called a SAFER designation from the Department of Labor for all of our departments. There were eight entities in the state that have attained that, Bucksport is one of them. So we were not able to have an inspection last year because of the whole pandemic. They've been through interim, but they were back. And receipt of this designation translates to an almost 10% savings in our workers' compensation premiums annually. And the inspection of our facilities, our training records and the ongoing improvements that we've made for worker safety, in addition to the low rate of workplace injuries, hopefully will continue combined to allow us to continue with this designation across all departments. In speaking with a gentleman who was here to do the inspection, he indicated that every department that he had inspected had done very well and all of that. So I look forward to his report. I want to extend my thanks and appreciation to town clerk Jacob Grant and his election workers for another efficient and well-run election. Although this election did not have all the challenges of last November, he and his staff do a consistently great job. And I also want to thank all of the council and school board candidates for the great job they did in running respectful and issue-focused campaigns. We are so fortunate here in Bucksport there, that there is a high interest in public service. I would like to request the council's schedule and infrastructure committee meeting to discuss the needs of the animal shelter for both inside and outside space. We operate a great and much-needed facility, but it has issues that need to be addressed.
Is that the, the one over by the transportation?
Yes.
Oh, okay, because I, I volunteered there a little. And I don't know if, if that's something I can get into, whether it be volunteer work or whatnot. I have volunteered there previously. I know they would love to have a dog run, it'd be nice to have maybe some beautification. I don't know if that's something that's on, on, you know, on the list of things, but I'd like to be.
That's why I've asked the council to have our infrastructure committee, committee meet to talk about the needs that have been identified, including dog runs and some additions.
That, that'd be awesome, yeah, all right.
Thanks.
American Cruise Lines would like to be placed on an upcoming agenda to discuss their relationship with the town, the use of the town dock and the possibility of financially contributing to our dock replacement project. I anticipate receiving a letter to that effect in the near future. And when I do, I will put them on the agenda for you to talk to. The senior center lease issue that I brought you up to date on a while ago, that we got the $65,000 bill for 10 years worth of expenses. I spoke with former town manager Roger Raymond today about the original senior center lease and he was extremely helpful in explaining why the town had not been billed for utilities despite the fact that it was listed in the lease. He also indicated that it was his intent to renegotiate that lease when it expired in 2012, but he was no longer the manager at the time that that happened. To the best that I can determine, there was no council action on the lease in 2012 and no negotiation at all. Just an identical copy of the 2012 lease was signed. Now that I have a better picture of how this all occurred, I will be meeting with Stanford management to discuss the matter more fully. But in a nutshell, when that was first done, although that was in the lease, the owners of the property indicated that they would not bill for utilities because at the time, Eastern Area Agency on Aging was providing meals through that kitchen. The residents of the, of the facility overall were utilizing those spaces. And because it was considered that the town operating its senior center there was a great benefit to Bucksport Square because it provided them with basically an activities director and access to meals a number of times a week, all the stuff that they didn't have to engage staff or do any of those kind of things for. And I think those caveats are still true, more so today. We're offering more there for, so, but Mr. Raymond was extremely helpful. I finally get the picture of what occurred at the time that was done. And it's unfortunate in 2012 that it wasn't, there wasn't an opportunity to fix it. I am pleased to report that the planning board approved an application at their meeting on November 2nd for the private development of 11 market-rate apartments in the former, former Timberlands building. This is one more piece of the puzzle as we consider how to attract a variety of needed housing types from market-rate apartments to single-family homes to senior housing opportunities. But 11 is a good number to start with. I submitted the information requested as part of the county's consideration of matching the use of some ARPA funds for first responder hazard pay. The deadline for submission was October 29th and it is my understanding that they will be discussing the results again at their next commissioner's meeting. And voting for the USA Today 20 Best Small Coastal Community Contest ended on October 25th. And up until the week before voting ended and they stopped showing who was ahead, we were ahead. The contest is supposed to announce the winner on Friday, November 5th. And even though the prize is only bragging rights, I think it is fair to say that our nomination has gained us recognition at the national level. One thing I forgot, for any of you who have followed our Facebook page, you saw a post last Thursday, we had a visitor, an artist from, she lives in Saco, her, her shop is in Kennebunk, who came to present Bucksport with a gift. And if you come into the town office, it's hanging, the gift is hanging on the wall. But she presented it and I opened it and it's this beautiful shadow box with very intricate mussel shell patterns and flower shapes. And she presented it, it was very emotional actually. And when she handed it to me, she said, "You've saved my business." And I said, I'm confused. And she said, during the pandemic, my son attends Maine Maritime and I had been. She said, "But I was walking your waterfront and there were all these floats stacked up." She said, "And I'd always had the idea of doing something with mussel shells." And there they were, right in front of me, all over these floats. So she got a paint scraper and a tote and she took the mussels and. So she got a paint scraper and a tote and she took the mussels and worked out this extremely complicated how you clean them in this three-step process. And then started making these shadow boxes. And she now cannot keep up with the demand for them in her business. And she credits what she was able to find here with saving her business. She told us the dollar value of what she had sold thus far and it is astounding. But, and she gave us a $500 check for a business that was, needed help or helped someone in our community who was struggling. And if there was ever anything that sort of sent me home Thursday thinking, where else but Bucksport? Where else but Bucksport do we get this kind of? But she was, that post on Facebook, the last time I checked, was in excess of 3,000 views, which means that good news can travel as fast as bad news. And certainly it does here. But my name is Danielle Perot, and lovely young woman. And you could ask the office staff, it was a very emotional time. She was very, very grateful to the town of Bucksport for the inspiration and the raw materials that she needed at a time when she needed it. So, and if you, like I said, if you're at the front counter, it's up on the wall over Cassie's desk. It's just a stunning piece.
Thanks, Sue. Any questions? Did you hire her back, Rich, to clean them up again this year too?
Not as many. She can grab them off the anchors, the anchors and on the rope. But we have a lot of newer floats out there. And for some reason, they grew sea grass and not the mussels this year.
Okay.
We were astounded when they came out. We think what might have happened is we had a lot of rain this year, so a lot of that may have caused that to not grow or fall off.
Next item is public hearings, hold public hearings, approval licenses. Do we have any discussion items? Not on the agenda for the council, the public, if anyone wants to talk about, Rich?
You want to go right there? I'm going to set up, I guess, some pictures for you. The wall project is complete, including new detectables. If you're not familiar, detectables are the ADA metal walking pieces that have the bumps on them so that they can cross the road. New flowers planted at Ming's Garden because those were all taken out. Everything has been paved. And the final walkthrough can't happen until Mandy Oliver returns from her vacation in a couple of weeks. But all in all, Gardner did a great job on the project and we were very happy. So this is the first wall down by Seaboard, Fredville Credit Union. It was the last one added to the project, first one done. Over here, stomach pile glass. One update did happen today as part of the inspection. That's all brand-new curving and the wall, but there was nothing in between. And the engineer requested that drainage stone be placed in between and that was completed. Just more views of it because I have to provide all this to the main DOT. Again, this is wall three over by Mill Street. Three of the workers called out sick from the paving company, so both Gardner and his son actually helped lay the asphalt. This is at Ming's Garden, brand-new asphalt up top. This was all, excuse me, brand-new granite. That was all asphalt originally and on the roadway that was all in there. That's all brand-new granite there as well. Here's a detectable. This wall is very difficult, as you can probably tell with all the ins and outs. We'll get to this in a second. On that wall, there was one top plate that either someone, something happened and it wasn't securely in, so that was replaced and passed inspection. This is the last one. All four of the walls leading up to this wall, grass is grown, flowers planted. There's a one-year warranty on the flowers at Ming's, so if they don't survive the frost, they'll be replaced by spring nursery in the spring. This grass is starting to grow over here at this last wall. This last wall led to a little bit of controversy because as you can probably see in one of the earlier pictures, it's close to the, close to the road and at the traffic light. And there were complaints on, one of the last days, it was Indigenous People Day and Bar Harbor was kind of packed. Traffic was backed up from the phone call I got was backed up to the home co-op hill. So I contacted Gardner. They said they were going to lunch anyway. It resolved itself. I went down the next day when Gardner wasn't working, the traffic was all the way up to Route 46. It's because there's an issue with the traffic lights. They are no longer on a sensor. They will sit there for three minutes whether or not there is, roughly three minutes, whether or not there's traffic coming from any direction at all or not. So when you have congestion coming from MDI, whether there's construction or not, we're going to continue to have that backup. I spoke to my person who spoke to the highway guy and they, they are going to recommend that Bucksport be put on a work order for 2023 and 2024 to expedite this and get this fixed. The town handles this traffic light on its own. This is to get it on the MDOT to handle. So that led to that. We had a big rainstorm, a second big rainstorm, about another five inches of rain came down in a few hours. And there was notice of water pouring through the wall at Ming's Garden. If you can see right here where I have highlighted, that is a sub-pump drain that jumps up and it closed the water right out that building and it shot through. You can see on the top of the bricks here, that's all covered in mud where it just sprayed. It came through. There was no drainage, not an ounce of drainage in any of the five walls that were replaced. There's three-quarter inch stone that lies below this. So this is topsoil, good for planting. And then there's another layer of sand and then stone that goes all the way down to the ground. I've been assured that the water is supposed to come out of the wall so it doesn't stay behind the wall, expand, and break the wall out. I asked if it would sit in the wall and they, I was told that it would not sit in the wall and it would not ruin it. When I spoke to the gentleman at the DOT, he had the exact same wall placed in at his house and he had no concerns with it either. These plates had been sits put in place, the mulch has been added as well. This will all be to help. The water should hit off of this and the water will come over the top. When you get that much water, it's got to go somewhere. So at that point, it will either seep through and come out into the drainage. We did check, there's a drainage pipe. If you look at the last wall, where Phil Rosen used to live, that's Bridge Street and it comes out and it's by lead betters. There is a pipe that comes out there. We checked that to see if anyone, no water came through that pipe whatsoever. So everything is working and that was a big storm. So everything's working the way that it should with the walls. And I'd just like to thank Gardner for the fantastic work. They hired all local people, Gene Bass did the grass, hardscrabbled on Verona Island, did the walls. I apologize, I don't know who the paving company was, but all in all, it was a great job. I spoke to John because the projects come in under budget minus this last payment requisition. We do have to return the monies. He did tell me I need to apply soon. I don't know what soon is. I've asked him, but I told him I'll get quotes as quick as I can. But if I can get it in under the wire, whatever the wire is, we'll be eligible for more funding 2023. There are, by my calculations, nine walls, five on US Route 1 and four on Central Street. I'm going to get a quote for all of them, mix and match and get us closer to that number for that. Does anyone have any questions about the walls, any concerns about anything?
Did we lose any sidewalk width? And the reason I ask is snowball.
No, we did not lose sidewalk width. But my, my concern is it was already a close call prior and I didn't know the size of the sidewalk cloud. I should have asked Jay and then I could have forwarded to Mandy to ask to have the walls put back about six inches to ensure that there wouldn't be any issue. What we may have to do is maybe not get so close to the walls.
Well, I guess that, I mean, that is going to end up on our crew to make sure that they're.
It's an operational adjustment.
Scraping the walls.
Yeah, and we've talked about that because the crew was aware of that.
Okay.
And they said that that would have been nice and I said, had I known, I would have asked.
Well, that was my, that was my concern, was just thinking with that skid steer thing going down through there and if it's tight, are they just going to bang off these things? And I hope that does not happen.
No, well, what was mentioned today was shovels that in the certain areas where they would have to, they would just, they would use shovels and take care of the tight spot.
Those, what'd you call them, detectors?
Detectors, detectables.
And because I don't know it, how do those work with snow coverage and stuff and ice? I mean, is there, is there just some maintenance that we got to make sure is taken care of on those when the snow and ice does show up?
That's, that's, when Jay's crew comes through with, I thought you were going to ask something different, so I'm glad I listened to your whole sentence. When Jay's come, Jay's.
Thank you for listening to my whole sentence.
Follow the sign church. So when they come through, it will clean off. We usually don't beat ice and we've had these before. These are just new because the detectable is placed, poured into, placed on top of the concrete when it's poured and then it's put in afterwards. So this was already paved. This was put in after and with a binder coat and then the final layer sealed that all up there. So no, there's no heat or anything to keep, nothing we would literally have to go out there. Now, I don't typically walk where there's detectables in streets in the wintertime. I'll check this year to see what that is. The bumps are more pronounced because the others have been there since Main Street was redone. It's not cement, so they won't be broken by sidewalk clouds, which is where I thought you were going with that question.
Can you explain what the detectables do?
Yeah, so apparently you're walking, you're visually impaired, you're a cane, you're walking stick, whatever that tool is to use. This tells you.
That you're in a crosswalk.
Apparently that you're in a crosswalk and the direction that you're going. So this is pointing to go across and there's a beeper with a timer and so you've got sound and your visualization by touch. All the detectables in areas where the walls were fixed, replaced, they need to be as part of ADA for when you do sidewalk maintenance.
Chief, do you have something?
Yeah, Rex, do you know, could you go back to where the fire hydrant was? Do you know if that wall was moved out towards the road anywhere the fire hydrant is? The reason I asked and brought my attention that whether to turn that fire hydrant on now with the hydrant wrench, you can't turn the wrench all the way around without hitting the wall on top. So I didn't know if it was moved out or not. And you can't turn it on with the wrench, but they recommend you put it on and you turn it around and you don't just keep wrenching it in one motion to bring that up. So I didn't know if it was closer or not. It brought my attention, I was going to ask.
Here, here it looks a little rough because I can't tell the actual dimension. What I can say is that they were required to show proof that they were six feet from the road. So if you check anywhere where a wall was installed, you are going to see in the road a nail and a pink spray paint. And that shows you where six feet from where that wall was to that pink nail, so that pink marks in the ground. I have pictures of the walls in their original condition, so I can check. I don't think this wall bent like that in that location. I think it was a straight shot and it was further back. I don't think the engineer took into consideration, they had to follow specific to what the engineer designed. Originally, the engineer did not design to have drainage. That was all added afterwards, drainage pipes. The stone was there, but what we're finding now is that sidewalk cloud question wasn't asked or answered and apparently now this.
And they tried the tool on that chief and that's what they have to do or is that just a question? Okay. Because I'm wondering whether there is that curve in there, if they, if there's some code thing that they took to bend that around there so it would fit.
I'll have to double check.
I know Chris was available to them anytime they needed because of some of the plans, they were water pipes where we did not know we had water pipes. They were buried.
Of course it was.
So, so we found some new pipes that the town has. So yeah, that was the wall project, a lot of work. I started with a phone call on January 3rd. It's November 4th and the project is now complete.
Very good.
Thank you. Yes, they did a great, great job. Just a couple more updates. Haunted Stories on the Hill, if Derek would like to speak to this, it was a very well-attended event. Proceeds from, it was remission, donations were accepted, proceeds went to Buck Memorial Library. I'm not sure if there's pictures online, but videos, but there were kids, there were guest speakers who were there to speak. There were kids who were there who had spoken and Derek invited me, that was a pretty good turnout for that group. I'll let him speak more to that and I just got a few more for you.
I swear I'm not bragging. I just want everyone to know that the event went super well. I only bring that up because we got over 100 people out there on a super cold night, huddled around, people in blankets, listening to local storytellers. It was also an open mic event as well as some scheduled speakers. We had involvement from Fort Knox, the director Dean Martin told some stories, as well as a local author named Christopher Packard. He was there telling stories as well, as well as Lisa Ladd and I cannot remember her last name, but a librarian there named Terry. It was just a super good event and the author, Chris, is from Hamden. And I'm going to read a message that night. He said, "Thanks for having me out. Definitely one of my favorite events I've been to this far, certainly the one with the best atmosphere. Great job on the event. Bucksport is a wonderful community." That's, that's all I want to, I want to say about that, coming from a guy from Hamden, where I think some of us tend to think that there's more going on elsewhere. We're keeping busy in town here. I did want to bring up, is it the ARPA funds? Am I saying that properly? I noticed that the library was not an option on the survey and I would just like to, as myself, say, you know, if they have come up in front of the council or if they plan to, that you guys do consider them with those funds. I know that when COVID closed, when COVID occurred, they did have to close and I'm sure they could use some help. We were able to raise $926 for the library. And if I already said this, I apologize, but people just came up to us and said, "Are you guys going to do this again? Are you going to do it again?" Social media is the same thing. I think that this community is amazing and we're starting to see more and more people step up and want to do events. You know, Goolsport was an amazing thing as well. And just, again, I want to stress, the library is near and dear to my heart. If we can consider them in the future for any of those funds, that would be amazing. And also as we continue to discuss the waterfront and whatever repairs are needed or, you know, whatever money is being spent in, spent for that, just to continue considering allowing big and small events to occur. And yeah, that's all I've got. Thank you.
Thank you. Nice job.
Thank you. Goolsport, like Derek mentioned, was very well attended. There was the window decorating contest. Sue and I were the judges and the winner was the Bayside Beauty. They were presented with the beautiful plaque. I don't know if you've seen it online, but Chucky Downs created a mini tombstone and 2021 Window Decorating Contest, Goolsport. It was awesome. I sent out to local business owners today and if I missed anyone, if they're listening, please contact me, the main jobs and recovery small business grant application portal. It was supposed to open on November 1st. There were issues at the state. It opened on the 3rd. Funding is through the 26th. All the guidelines are attached to a link that I have on there and they're the FAQs. But if anybody needs further guidance, I can walk them through the process. Sent out the press release and we've already had somebody sign up for the lights parade. Again, thank you to the council for allowing this to happen. It will be on Saturday, December 11th. The top three floats will be judged as they pass by the Bucksport Town Office. Chris and I spoke and we met with Sue and the route this year. Chris spoke with Public Safety before we released the press release about having it follow the old Bay Festival route. Up Franklin, down Mill, down Main Street, back towards the, back towards the former Mill parking lot. So we've already got someone signed up for that. I got thank yous from the local media people saying, finally, there are events happening. So that was quite good to hear. And the last piece I have for you, ARPA Tourism, it's funding through the EDA in partnership with GEI. They came up with a plan for the new time dock system that we looked at. It's roughly $3.2 million, and we thought we had other funding lined up, but that's at least a year away. We have until January 31st, 2022, to apply for this funding. The estimated program funding is $240 million. The ceiling's $10 million, the floor is $100,000. We're not guaranteed to get it, but on behalf of the town, I'd like to apply for that there. Also
You haven't done it yet?
I, I talked to Sue about it yet. We just found out this week about that, so a little kudos to my, my soccer team, the Bucksport Middle School Soccer Team finished 10-0 this year. We won, it's our first year in the championship league. We won the championship, 1-0 in overtime versus Orno at Hampden Academy. The girls' soccer team is playing for the Class E State Championship this Saturday in Prescott at 10:00 a.m. If anyone else would like to get up at 5:00 in the morning, ride up there. The boys had their best season on record this year. They went in as the number four seed. They made it to the semifinals. They lost to Orno. And then the boys' football team has a playoff game in Winthrop on Saturday night at 7:00 a.m. So it looks like we're starting to get back out there. We had great crowds at the soccer field with the lights. If you have not had a chance to attend, it's a wonderful atmosphere, and I would say a tendency to double or a triple. I mean, it helps having good teams, but just about every single visiting team says this is the nicest field in the state now. And I think a lot of it has to do with the lights and the maintenance that Chuckie provides. So thank you for your time. I'm sorry to have a meeting.
Thanks, Rich.
Thanks, Rich.
You do have a committee assignment you wanted, you want to do infrastructure?
I would like to have an infrastructure committee meeting so that we can talk about the animal shelter. It's been a, Public Safety Director Gagan, Deputy Chief Winchester and I have had a number of conversations about space and utilization and all sorts of things, but it's a, a very small space. There's no outside kind of areas for the animals. It provides a great service, a very well-supported component of our community, and people are expressing concern about its
I, I mean, since I've been on the council, it seems like the best we've done is nickel and diamond and, and kept it together with duct tape and stuff.
I'm not sure we've gone as far as nickels and diamonds.
Oh, you're probably right.
But, but we have a very committed ACO and assistant who is just doing a tremendous job with the whole, everything from being that, to promoting adoption of these animals and other communities that contract with us, thinks she's great as well.
Absolutely. I think it's time, so. The only, and figure out a time here, a minute. The only question I had, going back to Mia's presentation on the tobacco-free policy, is that something that we want regulatory review to look at, or is that your purview alone is?
That would be, we have a no-smoking policy.
Right, right.
But I don't, I haven't looked at how that compares to what they're proposing for the smoke-free policy, and if you
What was, I mean, and I appreciate her coming, but I, I thought we would have, you know, had something in our hand or something from her that would have asked what, what direction they wanted to go in other than, or, or is that now sitting in our hands waiting for what direction we want to go in?
Well, that, I think that's what she's left to with, is the idea that they, they've partnered with a number of communities to update their smoking policies for things like parks and other public spaces, and why don't I ask her for the template she's talking about? Provide it to the council, and if it's something that you want to refer to regulatory review, then you could do that with that.
Yeah, I just, I'd like to see what they're talking about, you know.
Okay, I'll get the template from them. I'll distribute it to you and at the next, put it on the agenda for you to decide at the next council meeting if you want to send it to regulatory review for any work or if you want to say, I'll also provide you with what we already have, so you can compare the two documents to see.
So I would think that
Does that sound?
For the, for the, for the shelter, I mean, half an hour should be able to handle that, right? So 6:30 for that, but no other committee assignments. I know everybody will be here at 6 o'clock anyway, so we didn't just say 6:00, but.
You said 6:30, is that the time? Okay.
6:30.
Economic Development is going to meet on Monday the 15th.
Monday the 15th.
Essex.
And if I skip, was anybody else here from the public that anything they wanted to talk about? Yes?
Yeah, I've been meeting with the Reverend York and a few other people, trying to start a community garden, and we are currently looking for, you know, maybe a bit of land that might be available, even if it's just a small space or, you know, anything that we might get like a foothold in, because I'd really like to start something, get more community involved, especially within the younger generation. So I, I don't know if that's anything, you know, if there's any
What, what, here's what I would ask you to do, if you could come up with some proposal, what you're actually looking for.
Okay.
And put, put that on an email to Sue.
Okay.
Or, or drop it off to her, whatever is easiest, and then that will give us something to look at, and then we can figure out where it can go from there.
Okay.
Does that work?
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anything else?
What about the pool party in front of McDonald's?
Main DOT.
Yeah? Is there an update on that? I might be
I, I, and I, I'm not going to speak out of term, but that, that really is a state issue.
It is.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. And if we could get the state to act on that, I would agree with you that
Hey, it'd be amazing if the last, not this storm, but the storm before that, I had to go to the hardware store to get a pump for my basement, and sure enough, I couldn't.
Oh, you can. You can go out, you can go out through the country.
Yeah.
It's a beautiful ride.
They are certainly aware of it because they were there, so.
Yeah, yeah, I know, I figured
They're doing, but they redid the whole thing, and it's just the one drain, this is not going to handle that a little more.
Yeah, it's, it's a bigger issue than just that.
There, there are some proposals as part of the, the further extension of Park Street that include drainage retention further up on that hill that should help to mitigate that. That's in a, a piece of it that's not been permitted yet, but it's designed
To grab some of that water and bring
Well, it's designed so that when they permit that next piece, those retention areas to slow it down enough to keep it from, will be implemented as part of that. And it may not solve it, but it should not be halfway up the doors of a car, you know, more manageable.
Yeah, they're okay, literally, yeah, okay, cool.
And this was certain of doing this well before Park Street, I think.
But the further development of Park Street can help to address
Can help address the
Yeah.
All right. Anything else? Next item is adjournment. All those in favor? Have a great night, everybody.